I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our Bryan City Council meeting for Monday, December 7th, 2015. On our agenda tonight, the first thing is the approval of minutes for the November 16th meeting.
I'll make the motion we approve them.
I'll second it.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes. Next on the agenda is the Hearing of Public Concerns. I know we have a group here that's going to do some stuff for us. Is there anyone else before they come up? Is there anyone else who would like to address this council? Hearing done, I will let the mayor introduce our guest.
Okay, Janie and Eric, if you want to come to the podium and is Janie, oh, okay, come up and introduce. I have, we have the opportunity after church on a Sunday, we go to Subway a lot and we met Janie there. We usually see her at Subway and eating and so forth, and they said they got quite a robotic team going and so forth, so we're happy to have them here. I know they're going to go into contests and so forth, and they're going to do a little presentation, so I'll turn it over to you. You can introduce what we have here and take it from that point, Jack.
Good evening, I'm Janie Tisovick from St. Patrick Catholic School, and I brought with me the FIRST LEGO League Teams. FIRST stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology, and it's an international program that encompasses grades kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. At St. Patrick Catholic School, we have two levels. We have the Junior FLL, which is students in grades one through three, and they build a model with Legos and they do a research project. And then we also have the kids from grades four through eight. What they are given every year is a challenge that is looking at a real world problem and then coming up with an innovative solution, or a change to a product that's already out there, or an improvement on the way that something is already done. This year, the challenge is called Trash Trek, and since August, the students have been tracing a piece of trash, from when it was made into trash to where it finally rests. And along the way, the students have come up with what they see as a problem with the way that something is handled or communicated, and what we're going to do today is present their findings of a problem and the solutions that they have, and they looked at our community as a place, you know, of how the trash is being handled, so they're going to point some things out to you. I'm going to introduce to you the FIRST team. They competed on Saturday in Toledo at the Toledo Technical Academy. They were competing against 27 other teams, and the Octobots took home the Program Award. Correct? No, the Research Award, I'm sorry. The Research Award, and they have been invited again to go to the district tournament in Bowling Green. They are a four-time district, they've been invited to districts four times. In 2012, they received the Innovative Solution Award. In 2013, they got the Programming Award at the regional level and the Inspiration Award on the district level. Last year, they were the regional grand champion and the second place in the robot performance.
Gracious professionalism.
And then at districts, they received gracious professionalism. This program has three parts. The first part is the project which we're going to present. The second part of it is about a robot. They have to build and design a robot and program it to do specific tasks on a board that they get. And they have two minutes and 30 seconds for this robot to get as many points and do as many missions as it can. And on Saturday, their high score was...
534.
534 points on this board. So, without any more ado, I present the Octobots.
Good evening, we are the Octobots, Team 5276, from St. Patrick Catholic School in Bryan, Ohio, and would like to present Sherlock Holmes and the food scrap caper. As a man walks the streets of Bryan, Ohio, he throws away a banana peel. To him, it is not a big deal, but to others, it is.
Watson, did you see that? A food scrap! According to the Ohio EPA, a typical household throws away an estimated 474 pounds of food scraps each year.
Yes, and food scraps are the third largest segment of our waste stream, which accounts with 26 million tons generated each year.
Over ni-- up to 90 percent of waste thrown out by supermarkets and restaurants is food scrap.
Whoever threw this banana peel away should have composted it instead.
This is a problem that needs to be stopped.
The Octobots found a similar situation when they visited the Williams County landfill. We saw a lot of food waste that should have been composted. According to data from the Ohio EPA, food scraps are the least recovered waste generated. If food scraps are composted rather than thrown in the landfill, greenhouse gas emissions would be reduced by more than 21.5 million metric tons of CO2 equivalent. This would slow global warming. In their quest to eliminate food scraps from the garbage of the city of Bryan, they find a researcher studying organic compost.
What are you doing?
I've been looking into organic composting and the benefits of doing it.
Does it work?
Well, it looks like there's successes in other cities. Pretty big stage with that. In New York City, with all the people that live there, a lot of trash generated. They started a pilot composting project in 2014, now over 80,000 people are participating. We also found that the waste going to the landfill has been reduced by 21 percent, and the greenhouse gas emissions are down to 17. They also projected by sending the compost they are creating, they will make back all the funds spent on the project by 2027.
Well, New York is a pretty big city. What other day did you have?
In the city of Cambridge, Massachusetts, a compost pickup program started April 2014. Their goal is to reduce the waste streams by 8 percent by 2050. They started their program after residents moved to Cambridge. They gave the residents baguette roll bags, some bins, and a tote to put the scraps in. The composters are collecting weekly.
It says here that the pilot last year collected over 170,000 pounds of food scraps.
Yes, and trash was reduced by 35 percent. There's a 95 percent satisfaction rate.
The successes the Octobots saw when they studied New York City and Cambridge City landfills led them to thinking that organic composting is definitely something that could happen in the city of Bryan. Using information from the Solid Waste Management Plan of the Joint Solid Waste Management District of Defiance, Fulton, Paulding, and Williams Counties, the Octobots investigated what currently happens to the garbage in Bryan and what the county's long-term goals are.
Well, Mr. Researcher, what do you see for our fair city of Bryan?
According to these graphs, food scraps make up 14.1, or 21,994 tons of waste in Williams County.
Wait, this is Bryan organic compost.
Well, the city of Bryan does compost, only yard waste. You have to be an EPA Class 2 facility in order to do organic composting.
The Octobots developed a strategy to institute a curbside organics composting plan, taking ideas from the successful plans in Cambridge and New York City that will reduce waste in the landfill and reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
I have a plan. First, we educate the residents and give them the tools they need to collect food scraps in, like baguette roll bags and bins, and totes for curbside pickup. Second, we produce a side loading truck that was recommended in the Cambridge program. You can get this truck within the Ohio EPA grant. Where to compost is currently the only Class 2 facility, is under the Florida Department of Massachusetts. We can work out a plan for us to take the food scraps there. Or commercial garbage companies like Republic Services and Waste Management offer organic composting and service. We can work out a plan for them to do organic composting here. Or since the city of Bryan already has a Class 2 facility, they can upgrade their facility, apply to the Ohio EPA to become Class 2. If they sell their compost, they can recoup their cost. With all these steps, we can eliminate food waste from our landfill.
The four counties of our waste district have a goal of reducing waste by 25 percent. If food scraps were eliminated from the waste stream and composted, we would be over halfway there. Composting helps the environment by saving time and money, preventing climate change, protecting the groundwater, and enriching the soil. As Sherlock and Watson look over their research, they discuss ideas.
Elementary, a plan that can save and time, save time and money as well sell the environment.
Because that financial will be composted.
Do you have any questions?
Have you ever investigated maybe turning some of the compost into biofuel?
Right now, we're thinking of, since there's an algae problem in Lake Erie and that has been attributed to the extra phosphorus in the fertilizers, we were thinking maybe we could sell the compost to farmers so that they wouldn't have to use phosphorus-rich compost fertilizers and pollute the water.
Good thinking.
Good job. Thank you.
Very organized, very good. Congratulations to you, too. I tell you, you've put a lot of time and effort into it, and that's wonderful. And we really appreciate you sharing it with us.
Thank you.
Now, when do you go to the districts now?
Districts will be January 9th in Bowling Green. And it's open to the public. The judging of their projects is not open to the public, but the robot games, which if you can bear with them for one minute, you want to show the robot poster. They do have a poster that they present that shows what their robot looks like and what their missions are. You want to go up so they can see it. They want to see it. Go closer, go up.
There we go. Whoa.
When we build our robot, we used the LEGO EV3 robotics set, and we are only allowed to use LEGO parts on it, so this year, using ideas from last year's competition, we have interchangeable attachments so we can accomplish more missions. We have two light sensors that we can sense the black lines on the board, and we have a strong sturdy base that allows us to stay on course. Our robot can accomplish six missions, and it can do it very repeatably. When we program, we have programmed one step at a time with our computer program, and we have to measure the distance our robot is about to travel and then convert it to rotations by division.
So you bring your own equipment? You bring your own Legos and that type of stuff, or they furnish that?
Yes, our robot is pre-built before the competition.
Oh, okay, gotcha. I thought you, earlier I thought you had to build the robot and the whole nine yards program and then do all these missions, but...
So is this tracking information, or what is the...
Those are our programs.
Composting people and truck designs, what are those?
Those are...
The programs.
The names of the programs for comp-- there are different missions on the board. Composting is, there's a machine on the board, yeah, down there, and you push that button and that activates the composter, and it will deposit a circle of compost, people, and then we also go and do other missions in that. Those are all the programs that the robot does. We download those on, we make these on the computer, and then download them onto the robot, then judging by what these are, the robot knows what it needs to do.
Those are our three longest programs, and they all use the light sensor to ensure repeatability.
Am I right in thinking that this is on a small scale, what we would like to see on the farms? Is that right?
No, it is not.
Okay.
This is just, this is a fun part with our project. It's making the research parts seem really fun.
All right. That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
Very nice.
Neat.
At this time, I would like to introduce St. Patrick's Catholic School's second robotics team. These are the fourth and fifth graders. This is their rookie year, so this is the first time that they are going to go to competition. They will be going on Saturday to Sylvania Southview High School to compete with 25 teams over there. So at this time, I would like to present the Irish NanoBots, NanoSpots. Sorry. Right there. I don't know if it's on, but it's right there.
Good afternoon, good evening, we are the Irish NanoBots.
Excuse me, could you put the microphone right down by your mouth, please? There we go.
Good evening, we are the Irish NanoBots Team 19568 from St. Patrick Catholic School. We are here today to tell you a little bit about the problem we found and how we think the problem should be solved. Since the end of August, we have been studying trash and how it is handled after we make it. We have visited the Northwest Recycling Center where we learned about all the different types of metal that can be recycled, and even saw car being demolished so that it could be recycled. We took a tour of the Williams County landfill and saw a garbage truck dumping its load. We wondered why there were things in the trash that could have been recycled, so we took a look at the city of Bryan website to understand the garbage and recycling laws. We were confused about where to look for the garbage information. We finally found what we were looking for under Street Department tab. We want to make it easier for people to use the website so that they can recycle more and put less trash into landfill. We also want to teach people about the benefits of recycling. The first change we propose is to change the recycling tab to refuse and recycle. By putting all the information under one tab, the residents of Bryan can find all the information quickly. From the Ohio EPA website, we found this fact sheet that will make people more aware of how recycling saves energy and protects the environment. From the Street Department page, we suggest that only the information about the garbage be moved to the Refuge and Recycling tab. The cemetery and leaf collection information will remain on the Street Department page. Part of our research included looking at the websites of other cities. We view the city websites of New York City, New York, Cambridge, Massachusetts, Salina, and Oberlin, Ohio. We liked the printable recycling guide on the city of Oberlin's website. If the residents can print off a guide, they could put it near their recycling bin, and more things would be put into the bin than into the trash. Another thing that we liked from other city websites was their links to more information about the environment, so we suggest an educational corner with tips for recycling and protecting the environment by trashy. From the waste management website, we found this link that describes what a landfill From the Ohio EPA website, we found this fact sheet that will make people more aware of how recycling saves energy and protects. And one of the last things we found that some people might like are ideas of how to repurpose items like they use from websites like Earth911 and Recycle Nation. On the recycle bank, people can learn about recycling and saving energy by answering questions to earn points. On every website we visited, they all had a link to report that tells the residents how the city is doing. In reducing their waste and improving their recycling efforts, it is good to tell people that they are doing a good job. We also liked that of the other cities' websites, there were links to information about places that recycle light bulbs or packaging peanuts, for example. By giving residents options for where to recycle things, less trash will go into the landfill. We put together a little commercial to advertise the changes to the website so that people
Hi, I am Vanessa.
Hi, I'm Katie.
Hi, I'm Rachel.
Hi, I'm Lynn.
Stop saying that, sir. Are you sure you don't want to tell another one?
I don't know. Have you visited the Bryan website before?
No.
Well, let's go check it out.
They said that you can recycle ketchup bottles, water bottles, dish soap bottles, peanut butter jars. You can not recycle leftovers, but you can compost them. Cardboard, recycle it.
Be creative, and don't sell like cured coffee, because you can be creative and make something out of it.
I recycle coffee beans in it, but you can compost it.
Can you get me to get away clean? Cause everything you know is gone away eventually. Vanessa! Vanessa!
Do you have any questions for the younger kids?
Anybody out here have any questions?
I think we can take a look at that website, and it was interesting, and I turned it back up, what happens to that, and we'll see. I saw it, and what are we going to put back?
They're repurposing.
Thank you very much. And I have for everyone here a little treat, a little pounder, if you want to come forward. I'm sure you can recycle this stuff.
Yeah. Is there a possibility we could have everybody give their name so that the people on television could hear the name of each person? As you leave, could you go up there and give us your name?
Go ahead, Katie.
My name's Katie Dorsten.
I'm Vanessa.
Lance.
Rachel Winker.
Josh Underwood.
J.J. Devlin.
Jonathan Dorsten.
Tony Malanga.
Caleb Sampson.
Hallie Tisovick.
Thank you very much.
I just want to make one comment. This is a very, very nice, well-done presentation.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Something I think we can all learn something from.
Do they, do they meet certain times during school, or is this after-school activities that they do this?
This is an after-school activity that they do, and like I said, they've been meeting since the first week of school, twice a week, and part of the time they spend doing research and the other part of the time they spend building their robot, and they have to prove to the judges when they go in for core values, which is how they treat each other and how they work together as a team, they have to tell the judges how they divided their time. And we make it kind of easy because at school, we do their project research, and then the big robot table, which is a four-by-eight table, is set up in my dining room. So that's how we separate from one thing to the other. The first program is also inclusive of students in grades nine through 12, and there's two, they build bigger robots. They build 120-pound robots that pick things up like trash totes and stack them, and they get new challenges every year. So there is a group of students that are working out at four county and Northwest State to put together a team that will be competing in March, so they'll be building one of those big robots.
Wow.
Yes.
Well, you had a chance to be on TV tonight.
Lovely.
We wish you good luck in all your future competitions.
Well, thank you, and hopefully we've got something that you guys might want to put into practice, especially the website for the city.
I started on the Kennedy of the Four County Solid Waste Program, but we said I'll work putting that together, but I never thought anybody ever looked at it, so...
There's 328 pages to that document, right, Jay?
Oh, yeah. That was, that was fun to look through.
He read the whole thing.
Yes, I did.
I'm sure Mr. Exstrom's full of ideas back there.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sure you're full of ideas now, Tyson Castro. All right. Thank you.
Ben, right, segue?
Oh, yeah.
I told them they were welcome to stay beforehand.
I think I understand.
Sure.
I never thought I'd look at that before.
It's a lot to look at.
It's been a while, putting that thing together, so.
Okay. We'll move on to item number three, which is an ordinance. Please read in number.
Ordinance number 45, 2015. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending December 31st, 2015. This is a transfer of $500,000 from the 1% income tax fund, the 101 General Fund, for general spending purposes. It's also a transfer of $10,890 from the electric fund for the 402 generator maintenance fund as directed by Director of Utilities Carlin. Total amount of transfer requested: $510,890.
I'll move to we suspend.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Okay, number four on the agenda is another ordinance. Please number and read.
Ordinance number 46, 2015. An ordinance granting to Mr. Daniel W. Teis and Mr. Roger W. Teis Farm its successors and assigns an exclusive easement for the purpose of access between farming parcels along the channel of Six Mile Creek in Paulding County for farming purposes.
The administration at the Bryan Municipalities was contacted by Attorney Dave Hyman from Paulding County, Ohio, regarding some property that we own down in Paulding County. Mr. Hyman's clients needed some access to some landlocked property for farming purposes, so because it is dealing with real estate issue, granting an easement, it has to come to council to be approved for that easement. It is on the agenda for next week before the board for approval there as well.
Is this something just came up, or, I was thinking we've done this in the past, have we, or not?
Not in this particular one.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, did something with the mayor and me, too.
We did something along that line, but not easement. Built with tray or something.
The 692 elevation, I think, but there were some corrections.
Correction, elevators.
We, no, we previously had some people who lived along the Oglays, and they needed to correct their legal descriptions because the elevation.
Okay, I'm with you now, all right.
So you say this will, they'll need a first reading on this?
No, we can, we can pass it.
We can pass.
It's granting an easement for them just for access purposes.
And then something will be on the next meeting?
No, it's going on the board meeting next week for approval by the board.
Do we need to suspend it, or is it that big a deal? Okay, I'll move to suspend. I know, I couldn't figure what the heck we own down there, but now I know what it is.
Okay, I'll second that.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Second.
Dick Reed?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rick Hoopie?
Yes.
Dick Wright?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
All right. Item number five on the agenda is another ordinance. Please number and read.
Ordinance number 47, 2015. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bryan Exploding LLC for the project known as Sanitarium Storm Sewer Improvements on portions of Le Gleyde Court, Brenner Avenue. Keith.
Yes.
All right. Item number five on the agenda is another ordinance. Please number and read.
Ordinance number 47, 2015. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bryan Excavating LLC for the project known as Sanitary and Storm Sewer Improvements on portions of Le Glide Court, Brenner Avenue, Palmer Lane, and High Street.
Hey, Bryan, one of our year-end projects we've got. We decided this year to lump together quite a few sewer projects all into one. I have a letter in there that summarizes all the bids, lowest being around $215,000 with Bryan Excavating LLC. I urge you to suspend the rules and award this project, and we can get the funds encumbered this year and get rolling on it.
Is this part of that neighborhood thing we did?
This is one of them, yeah. We applied for some grant funds for that and did not get the grant funds, but I had enough money left in the budget that we decided to throw it in with the storm sewer project and get it encumbered this year. So I think the bleach dates June 1st. I do the June or July 1st, one of the two.
Will this take care of that, or is this just part of the project?
This will replace sanitary sewer on Le Glide Court and add storm sewer in three other areas that do not have it.
Okay. Move, we suspend.
Second.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Rick Hoope.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Will we adopt? I'll second.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rick Hoope.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
All right, item number six on the agenda is some building permits, right?
Actually, you had two in your packet, and I added a third one tonight. If that's acceptable, do you want me just to throw them all together in one lump sum? I think that's typically what we do.
I think that's good.
Okay, the first one, A Stamp Inc. is doing a 7,000-square-foot addition and also remodeling 5,600 square feet for, I think they're putting some offices, doing some storage. X amount of construction cost is approximately $173,000. Bryan City Schools is doing a lean-to on one of their little storage buildings out at the school site, $14,000 construction cost. And also Isaac Southtown Property is doing a remodel, I guess in what I would call the Kmart Plaza. Anytime Fitness is coming in, next to Tractor Supply Corporation. So that's about a 9,000-square-foot building remodel for a cost of about $425,000. So with that, I would request you approve the building permits.
I make a motion we approve the permits. Second.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rick Hoope.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain the idea of having a special meeting. And have we spent what we're going to do, Mayor?
As you know, we've been having a study with Arcadus throughout the year. And at the beginning of the year, they gave us a lot of things and a lot of things that need to happen at the wastewater plant. We're at budget time, and we have not put exact figures to that. It's going to have to be bid out and so forth. So Arcadus has agreed to come up here and meet with council. And I checked with different people. It seems like the 16th is the best date. I'm suggesting at 4 o'clock, it will be executive session just with Arcadus and lay out a plan so we can throw those figures in our budget and get that set, how we're going to make improvements, future improvements, not only the dollar amount, but when at the wastewater plant. So I'm looking at 4 o'clock, special meeting on the 16th, and we'll have that in the mayor's conference room back there in executive session, if everyone, if that's so desired. Only item on the agenda for that day.
Do we need to?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Rick Hoope.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Okay, so that concludes our agenda. And let's see. Chief Siders, you have anything you want to say?
No, sir.
Okay. Tyson?
No, sir.
Ben?
No, sir.
Ryan?
No, sir.
Chief Willis?
No, sir.
Okay. Tommy?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Rick?
Nothing tonight.
Dick?
I'm good.
Dick?
Nothing.
Oh, Lori?
No, sir.
Okay, Rhonda?
No, sir.
Okay, Mara?
Tyson is ahead of us already. Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, weekly Thursday trash will be picked up as usual on the 24th. Friday's weekly trash will be picked up on Monday or Tuesday, which is our regular trash day, December 28, 29. Usually that is a heavy day because of Christmas packaging and so forth. So that works out pretty good. And I think he's even jumped ahead and made the New Year's schedule saying Happy New Years. The city of Bryan will be closed Friday, January 1st, New Year's Day, and trash will be picked up Tuesday, January 5th. So there would be Friday's January 1st trash pickup will be picked up on Tuesday, January 5th. We got that right, Tyson? We're earned to go. So we know there'll be a lot of trash, and we'll help the St. Pass kids in getting that out to the landfill along that line.
A little recycling though.
Okie-doke. That's really all I have for tonight, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Tommy.
Yes.
Rick Hoope.
Yes.
Dick Reed.
Yes.
Dick Wright.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
We are adjourned.